All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, August 17th, 2022, here in the boardroom at the MAPS Central Administration Building. Can we have a roll call, please?
Linda Yingling.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kendra Osnes.
Here.
Jacqueline Grumler.
Here.
Maria Wolfie.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. If you would please join me, stand as you're able, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role of our elected board members and will let they serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students in a safe learning environment and the highest level achievement. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next on our agenda is our public comments to the board. I did not receive any of the pink sheets. All right, seeing that we have none, we will jump right into board recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize the new staff members. We would ask, here in the moment, that each staff member that's in attendance introduce themselves, what their role or in the district is, their grade, the building, that sort of thing. If you want to add a fun fact or something you're looking forward to this school year, that would be wonderful. Why don't we start with Holly? We'll put you on the spot.
Hey, hello, everyone. My name is Holly Hartley. I am the new agriculture teacher at the high school. I'm super excited to be there, as I myself spent a lot of time in that room, so it's very cool to be that agriculture teacher. I actually bouncing back and forth this week between here and there. I'm actually gonna sneak out, because my daughter has clover buds that she's doing, so it's just a busy, crazy week, and I love it. I've got to touch base with a lot of my students down there already, so I'm very excited to be here and just work with the students again. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. I am Perry Scott. I'm the new choir teacher at Merrill High School, and I'll be working with grades nine through 12. And I'm just really excited to start making music with all of our students over there and all the wonderful extracurriculars along with that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Trey Soverit. I will be teaching social studies at the high school here in town. I'm very excited to be back, as I graduated from here in 2017, and I'm looking forward to getting to work with everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Stacy Schultz. I will be instructional coach at the Merrill Middle School. I'm super excited to be here. We had moved here in the family in 2015, and fun fact, I'll have to say, I don't know if this speaks, but I am originally from Illinois, so.
Ooh.
I'm here touching the learners, and I have the best interest of everyone, but I am a Cubs and Bears fan, but.
There you go.
Hi, my name's Michelle Stefan. I'm going to be the school social worker at Prairie River Middle School. Fun fact, I graduated from Merrill in 1996, a few years before training, and I'm just really excited to get started.
Hi, I am Marissa Dujinsky. I just got married on Saturday, so we're getting used to the name. But, thank you. I am a new third grade teacher at Washington, and I'm really excited to be back in the district that I graduated from in 2016.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Juliana Kin, and I am the new Title I reading coach at Washington Elementary. I am thrilled to be here. I've heard such great things about the leadership and the progress of this district, so I'm thrilled to be here and working with kids again.
Hi, my name is Chloe Morris. I graduated in 2019, and I will be working at Kate Goodrich as a teacher's aide, that's grades K through 2. I've taken on the role of being art two, teacher, facilitator, instructor, whatever that is, and so I'll be really getting to work with every single student going through all the grades.
Hello, I'm John Hoyer. I'm in the IT Department, IT technician, just started last June. So I'll be doing AV, channeling a couple of schools, and I'm also originally from Illinois, but a Cub fan and a recovering Bears fan.
Thank you for being here. As I said this morning, really excited for a great school year and see you guys in your elements around the buildings. You'll see us and look forward to that, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our administrative reports. We'll go into that in a minute as we allow our new staff members to exit. Just as a reminder on our administrative reports, if board members had any questions, they had the opportunity to contact Mr. Murray or the administrator that wrote the report, just for any clarifying things or to go through that. Certainly can still ask questions this evening, just for discussion around the record. But this time, I'll turn over the administrative reports to Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Item A through C, A, B, and C, I have focus on last year's student results, employee engagement results, the student satisfaction and appearance satisfaction survey results. And if anybody has any questions or comments, and if anyone has anything. D is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report. The topic summary sheet is prepared by Glenda Oginski, and she is here today to answer any questions if anybody has anything. Next up is the Director of Special Ed Pupil Services Report, dealing with seclusion and restraint reports, and Karen Baker is here to answer any questions if anybody has any questions of her. Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the HR Budget and Technology Update, dealing with the fiscal updates, et cetera. Kelly Strike is here to answer any questions if anybody has any questions. Item G is the Director of Buildings and Ground Transportation Update, prepared by Dale Bergman. He is also here tonight, if anybody has any questions of Dale. And then item H on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. There's another topics on there, including the videos that we're preparing regarding how the board operates, the Jefferson School building, the future of it, where we're at in that process, the change to the building construction class that's being built on site, some information on the referendum, which is coming up a little bit later in the agenda, and some professional development. Any questions on that? I will add two just quick comments. Today was our first day with staff, as we met our new staff or some of our new staff today. It was a very good morning. We had the whole group together over at the high school auditorium. Kevin welcomed the group and said a few words, and we had Kathy Gibbons, who was with the Principal's Association of ASA. She was there presenting. She's been working with us now for a little while on professional learning communities, and she continued that work today. With the whole group this morning, the administrative team in the afternoon, and she'll be working with the teachers tomorrow as well, so she's here for two days, and that was time well spent. And I just want to add one other thing. In my report, I mentioned I've gone to a fair amount of WASD trainings, law seminars, and first-year superintendents things, and one of the values of that is the networking that takes place at those events. And one thing that has struck me as I've done that, and you get to know people, and you share work, give examples and stuff, and I just want to say that our board and our packets and the way we do things in committees and the way we post things in closed session is about as tight as ever seen. Certainly, we are in a pretty good place. I take no credit for that, but I just wanted to let you know that we're in a good place when it comes to all of those things, so whoever gets credit for that, kudos to them. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda, we'll go through our committee reports. We'll start with the Facilities Committee, attached with the draft minutes from our August 3rd meeting. Myself as chair, and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for any questions. Do any board members have questions for the Facilities Committee at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Human Resources Committee. The minutes from our August 10th committee meeting were attached. Members of the Finance Human Resources Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for Finance HR Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to the CTP Committee, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services. The minutes from the August 10th meeting were also attached. Maria Wolfie and other members of that CTP Committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for our CTP Committee? Hearing none, I guess we did have a lot of good committee work here this last month, and we did have some exciting information that we'll use as some board education coming up in the next month or two, just talking about different things that are going on and just a kind of a refresher on some things. Sometimes it's nice to hear those things again and maybe just in a little different method, laying things out for a whole school calendar year and some different things. We'll keep working on those ideas as they came out in those recent meetings, so exciting things coming up there, so stay tuned. On the agenda next is unfinished business. We do not have anything under that category yet this time, so we'll go right to Board of Education business. And the first topic there is our referendum discussion, attached with a topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray, and the Finance Human Resources Committee does have a recommended motion. Yes, I would start by asking if anyone would like to make a motion. Maria?
I'd move to proceed with a 2.5 million, four-year, non-recurring referendum on the November 8th, 2022 election.
I'll second.
Motion by Maria. We have a second by Ron. This time, I would ask if anyone has any discussion or questions on this motion or this topic. Paul?
The amount, the 2.5, is that adequate? Should we be looking at a little higher figure, considering inflation, everything else that's happening?
Yeah, so adequate is an interesting word, and you bring up a fair point about the inflation. The 2.5 is based on what we did in April, that was voted down, and that number was based on the feedback that we got from the community and the school perception survey. And so I think that the community's appetite for much higher than that than the past rate of that survey was reduced significantly, so we decided to go back at that number, the 2.5.
The 2.5, will that cover what we need?
Yes.
Are we going to be in a position where maybe we're going to have to do something else again or not?
Well, I think we're always going to be looking at those discussions about rent and planning enrollment efficiencies and those kind of things. We have a couple of things coming together at the same time. We have our ESAR funds that are sunsetting, and that's created, you'll hear the term financial cliff coming once those funds are expired, and so we have that issue that's on our horizon, ESR 2 expires this year, Luke Kelly, and ESR 3 next, 24, maybe?
2024, but I believe that we will.
Yeah, so those things are on the horizon. Now, those have been used this year as a stopgap and last year, if anyone hears it where. But I believe the 2.5 is the right for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Additional questions by board members on chat? Go ahead.
Kind of with Paul, the question, or last time, I thought when we talked, I was kind of confused, the 2.5 didn't, it was way short, I thought, like year four. Year three, started year three, and then year four, we were waiting, it was going to be quite the short.
Also, yeah, there's layers to that. So when we view the projections, all the PMA projections and the things that I've seen over the years, you make the assumption that you don't make any changes to how we operate. And so if we were to continue to stay with the same staffing levels and not adjust for the planning enrollment and get efficient, then that problem is there, compounded with the ESAR problem, that's all there for us. And so when those federal monies go away, we're going to have to make some choices. You know, we've created some positions based on those, we've done some different things based on that money, and so we think that with those efficiencies with them are in the middle, so I guess.
Thank you, Chad. Any additional questions on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, we do have a motion, so I will ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? This motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2,500,000 per year for four years for non-recurring purposes. That was a proposed resolution with a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limits by $2,500,000 per year for four years for non-recurring purposes.
Second. Motion by Ron, a second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, Tammy, I would like a vote of the roll call variety, so if you could have a roll call vote on this, please.
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Paul Prue.
Aye.
Chad Krieger.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Osnes.
Aye.
Jacqueline Grumler.
Aye.
Maria Wolfie.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously on a roll call vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2,500,000 per year for four years for non-recurring purposes. Attached was that resolution and a proposed resolution and a recommended motion by our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve, let's see here, I got the wrong one. Motion to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by 2.5 million per year for four years for non-recurring purposes.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Maria. I'll ask if we have any questions or discussion on this motion or this topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, we'll have a vote on this. I'd also like a roll call on this, please, Tammy.
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Paul Prue.
Aye.
Chad Krieger.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Osnes.
Aye.
Jacqueline Grumler.
Aye.
Maria Wolfie.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously on a roll call vote. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $1 million. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Kelly Strike. We do have a recommended motion. Anyone like to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and renewal anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $1 million.
Motion by Ron, we have a second.
Second.
By Maria, and Paul as well. Just a friendly amendment, one word was revenue in there, but may have just been either skipped or went through that I didn't understand, so just a friendly amendment there. Any discussion on this topic or motion? Any questions or discussion on the topic or motion? Hearing none, we will vote on this. Could we also do this on a roll call, please, Tammy?
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Paul Prue.
Aye.
Chad Krieger.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Osnes.
Aye.
Jacqueline Grumler.
Aye.
Maria Wolfie.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously on a roll call vote. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the 2011 Wisconsin Act 125, Seclusion and Restrain Reporting. This is informational only, and this topic summary was provided by Karen Baker. Was there anything you'd like to highlight on that, Mr. Murray, or Karen? Nope. This is an annual process, that's a requirement, and we appreciate all the work that goes into that, so thank you for providing that for the district, Karen. Next on our agenda is the approval of provisions to the 2022-2023 school calendar. That topic summary sheet was provided by Glenda Oginski, recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
Recommend the motion, recommend approving the updated updates to the 2022-2023 academic year calendar as presented. Sorry.
Motion by Kendra, we have a second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Any discussion or question on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the contract between Lincoln County Health Department and Pine River School for Young Learners for Health Screening Services. Topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinevich, and we have a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the health service agreement between Lincoln County Health Department and Pine River School for Young Learners for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any question or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of a contract between Lincoln County Health Department and Merrill Area Public Schools for grades 4K through 12 and the Northern Achievement Center. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the Lincoln County Health Services Agreement for the 22 and 2023 school year, grades 4K to 12, and the Northern Achievement Center, the amount of $115,104.
Motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion or question on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of additional special education assistance at Kate Goodrich Elementary School to meet the needs of a student with an IEP. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the additional special education assistant at Kate Goodrich Elementary School to meet the needs of a student with an IEP.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Any discussion or questions on this topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is informational only. It's the update on summer maintenance projects. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dale Bergman. Shannon, was there anything you or Dale would like to highlight on this? There's a lot of good information there.
No, Dale is here, and he's, I think, this is pretty complete.
It's pretty self-explanatory. Any highlights or changes since you authored that topic summary, Dale, or?
Just continuation of the things that we're done, and so on, we expect to do the new best.
Anything that Shannon, you'd like to add with your discussion with Rod Akey and the city in regards to the topic by the middle school? I know you've kept us informed, but sometimes at a meeting, people would like to hear what's going on in the street work. Sounds like some good progress.
So I spoke with Rod, and I believe Dale, you've been in probably pretty close contact as well.
Every day.
Every day, okay. All indications are that it'll be up and ready to go by the time this school year starts. So they're progressing nicely, and it's just a matter of getting contractors on site for the concrete pours and those kind of things, so they're very optimistic about the future.
Sounds good. I know many parents and staff members are excited for that to be back to normal. I'm sure our SRO Officer Jaeger is as well. All right. Anyone have any questions? I know it's informational only, but if we have any questions for Shannon or Dale on the summer maintenance projects, now would be the time. I think, like you said earlier, I think that's pretty self-explanatory and a very thorough list, so thank you for that, Dale. We'll move on the agenda then to the Washington Elementary paging System. That topic summary sheet was provided also by Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. I would ask if anyone has a motion this evening? Ron?
I'd like to recommend, make a motion to approve the project with Systems Technologies to provide an updated paging system and synchronized clock system for Washington Elementary School as presented.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Any questions or discussion on the topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is a potential change from the September 21st, 2022 regular board meeting date due to a conflict. There's a conflict, my understanding is with the WASD Fall Superintendent's Conference happens too fall, right on that week of September 21st, and that happens to hit that board night, so looking, someone is willing to make a motion for that change. Kendra?
I motion to change the September 21st, 2022 regular board meeting date to September 28th, 2022.
Motion by Kendra, we have a second by Ron. Any questions or discussion? I think that's pretty self-explanatory as well, didn't know what the dates of that conference would be, so couldn't do anything there.
Can I field a comment? Your news.
Fair enough.
This year?
At this time, we will vote on that motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the technical corrections made throughout the policy manual to change the district compliance officer from Edward Then to John Hagemeister per our bylaw 0131.3. Superintendent is authorized to review any technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through their normal rulemaking procedures, and Superintendent Mr. Murray will inform the board of any such changes at our next regular board meeting. So here we are with a group of about a dozen policies changing as stated, the compliance officer. So that is information. So that is informational only. We will move to the next item then on our agenda, which is our Personnel Report, the hiring, recruitments, resignations, and retirements. We do have a recommended motion, if someone is prepared to make a motion. Ron?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached Personnel Report, contingents upon satisfaction of appropriate liquidated damages for resignations if applicable.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? I will abstain as it applies that portion for Cassie and Gavin Ruleski. Motion carries with the abstention as noted. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I'll ask at this time if any board member would like anything pulled from our Consent Agenda this evening? Anyone like anything pulled? Otherwise, I would ask for a motion. Maria?
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C, which includes minutes of the July 2020-22 meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $2,523,217.17, and donations totaling $200.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Ron. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Chad?
From July 20...
All right, thank you. Motion carries with the noted abstention. Next item on our agenda is the item for items for future meetings. We've talked about this, and we'll continue to have this on there, just if anyone has any topics that they feel should be brought directly to the board instead of going through the committee process, or if you want to recommend something in front of the group to go through the committee process, now is the time. We do have a handful of items that we are still working on and making good progress on, however, have not hit that cycle for the committees or for board meeting. This time, I'll ask any board members if you have items for future meetings that you'd like to bring up. If you do think of some, feel free to send an email to Mr. Murray or myself for regular board meetings or copy us in with the committee chairs as we prepare for future committee meetings. While we talk about that, I know you had mentioned your superintendent's report, talking about some of the videos that we're putting together, kind of explaining the process and everything. There will be more information to follow on that as well, but just trying to explain the process of how the board operates and the next step on that is who the board is, what we are all about. So excited to see the rollout of that. Thank you all for participating, and thank you, Mr. Murray, for the idea.
Actually, Jacqueline Grunler needs the idea.
Wow, wow. Thank you, Jacqueline. All right. So hearing no items at this time for the future meetings, we'll move down just to that reminder of the radio schedule. Tomorrow morning, Mr. Murray and I will be on the Blue Jay 730 radio at approximately 8:15 a.m., talking about tonight's agenda with Ronnie or whoever is at the station for us. Future meetings, Facility Meeting meeting next Wednesday, September 7, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. The HR Finance Committee meeting immediately after that, Wednesday, September 7, 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee is set to meet on Wednesday, September 14, at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. And our next regular board meeting, as we just adjusted this evening, will be Wednesday, September 28, 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Those reminders, I have contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, Part N1, Part N D, except as provided in statute 304.06, Part N1, and E, G, and by rule, homogated under statute 304.06, Part N1, Part N E, and considering specific applications of probation, extended supervision, or parole, or concerning strategy for crime detection or prevention, the purpose of the closed session would be to discuss map safety protocols. I would be looking for that motion this evening. Moved by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Lynda. That motion, do we have a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Lynda Yinling?
Aye.
Paul Pro?
Aye.
Chad Krieger?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kendra Osness?
Aye.
Jacqueline Grunler?
Aye.
Maria Bolfi?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye. All right, so we will take a quick moment. Thank you for your attendance, and we will secure the room for our closed session.